All right. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I think we're on council this month.
I think we are. And what I wanted to do was just wait just a minute to let our, let the visitors or the attendees to actually clock into our meeting.
Okay.
Just wanted to give that and give us just a couple of a minute or so because they're slowly coming in. We're up to six now. So it looks like they're slowly coming into the meeting and joining us. And I just wanted to just wait just a minute or so. But I wanted to welcome everybody to the meeting. Those that are online with us tonight. Welcome again to the Third Ward Town Hall Meeting. I want to, while we're waiting for others to attend, just announce that the, those that are online right now that are pictured, and I wanted to recognize Councilmember Stacy Clay, our City Manager Gregory Rose, also our new Assistant City Manager Gabrielle Macaluso, if I said that correctly, and I'm hoping that's correct. So I wanted to let everybody know and recognize those that are attending this meeting. Also, we have attending as a guest, and that is Chief Hampton. And right now, what I'll do is turn it over to Councilmember Clay to give us some guidelines and and rules and how to chat and ask your questions. Councilmember Clay.
Thank you, Councilman Smothers. And I think we also have Lieutenant Sean Whitley from the University City Police Department in attendance with us as well. I also want to offer greetings to, to those who are in attendance and to those who might view this later. A couple of things about the structure of these meetings. We are the only, we being the panelists, the folks you see currently pictured are the only people that will be on screen. If you wish to interact with us, if you wish to ask questions, you can do so in the chat. And Assistant City Manager Macaluso will be personing that, and so she will read the questions off when we get to the general question and answer period. And myself and Councilman Smothers and or others assembled will work to answer your questions. I would ask this, I will certainly be doing this, but if there is ability for either City Manager or System Manager Macaluso to take notes, we want to make sure we get to every question and we answer it. Our Third Ward Newsletter is coming out in the next few days. And what I will commit to doing in concert with Councilman Smothers and is any questions that we can't answer in this venue, we will, we will answer in the, in the newsletter. So we will do, we will commit to doing that. So with that being said, on our agenda first is remarks from our University City Police Chief Larry Hampton and Lieutenant Sean Whitley. We asked them to come today regarding warm weather policing. We know that public safety is an issue irrespective of the time of year, but we know when the weather gets warm, shall we say, activity can increase. And so every year, certainly since I have been a part of the council, and I know Councilman Smothers did this prior to me, there was some sort of update as it relates to warm weather policing. So we are providing that for you now. So without further ado, let me turn it over to Chief Hampton and Lieutenant Whitley.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Good afternoon, Mr. Rose and Gabby Macaluso, as well as all attendees. I'm here today with the Detective Bureau Co-Commander Sean Whitley, Lieutenant Sean Whitley. And I will try to present a short, quick presentation, just an update of issues, not just within the Third Ward, but just in University City in general. So I'm gonna try to share my screen at this point right now, if I can.
We can see it's here.
You, you say you can see it?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Are you able to see one slide or several slides?
Both. There's one large one in the middle and then on the side there are.
Okay, let me, let me try. What about now?
Just the one.
Okay. All right. All right. This is the UCPD Third Ward Update PowerPoint presentation. It's gonna go fairly quickly and I will be open for any questions and Q and A sessions of what we have. First, it's a pleasure, like I say, to be here presenting to you all tonight. Calls for Service, this is for the University City Police Department Calls for Service. And basically, you see each year, the calls for service normally goes up. What I can tell you for the St. Louis County jurisdictions, similar to St. Louis, University City, we receive the most calls for service in general, and that means fire, EMS, police, anything of such, the police department will be responding to. And when I say the most, outside of St. Louis County, outside of St. Louis City, that includes Florissant, like-sized departments of Chesterfield, back in the day, it used to be Jennings, and on and on. So on this side of the river, as far as St. Louis County, as opposed to St. Charles County, and I'm not contacting, I'm not counting their particular stats, but in specific, the stats for St. Louis County and the St. Louis Metropolitan area. So Calls for Service, you see those numbers right there. Weapon seeds throughout 2020. And this is an update for the stats for 2020 because the stats for 2021 are still occurring. They occur on a monthly basis, and we have a month timeframe to turn a lot of our significant crime stats in. And that's a difference in how we're contacting is instead of summary basis, more crime incident based. So weapon seeds, you see, there's a lot of weapons. Missouri is a gun-friendly state. I can tell you that now. It allows 18-year-olds to carry weapons. It allows 17-year-olds sometimes to carry weapons, depending on the circumstance. There's a very lax gun laws, very lax gun laws here in the state of Missouri, not just in University City. We have, we have city codes and we have city ordinances, but most of those are structured off of state law. The strategic methods that we use to address crime here in University City, we deploy the 21st century policing techniques set forth by the Six Pillars on the President's Task Force report. The building trust and legitimacy, some of those examples are professionalism that we display, the standards that we have to display, whether that's the accreditation, certifications, community outreach and engagement. We're very active within our community. And it could be anything from from events that we host, like National Night Out. We will be hosting National Night Out, which of course, last year during the pandemic, it had to be canceled. Juvenile diversion programs, and I will speak a little further on that coming up. The policy and oversight, the national accreditation, the Missouri State Police Officer Standard Training, also known as POCs, city managers and these other city officials, they have direct policy and oversight of the police department. This is not something that works in a separate fashion than the city. We are part, we are city employees. We are public servants and we're city employees. Technology and social media. Now, the technology is something, as well as the social media, that has been everly increasing throughout the years as we go along. Body cameras, drones, surveillance, next door, rain, networks, portals, Facebook webpages, all of such works in conjunction with our keeping part of that pillar. The community policing and crime reduction, situational awareness, community engagement, and forums. Forums like this that we're having, the Town Hall Forum, I know it's virtually, and normally this would be in person, but these are some of the engagements that we're speaking on. Officer training and education, there are state requirements that we have to maintain. There are accreditation requirements that each certified officer has to maintain. And then there are the minimum educational requirements that we require within our department as well. Officer safety and wellness. This is a big part. The continual in-house training with licensed instructors, we have a lot of train-the-trainer instructors within the department. Lieutenant Sean Whitley is one. He's a TASER instructor. Just recently had to go to another county to get recertified on his TASER instruction so we can make sure we have non-lethal weapons out there for the community. Police chaplains, we have three police chaplains currently, and all three are within University City residents. Two live within the Third Ward. Captain, former Captain Carol Jackson, Chaplain Alverta Smith, and then we also have a Chaplain Rabbi Novak. These are three active victim services advocates that we utilize, counselors that we utilize, not only within the community, but within all police department. We also utilize the employee assistance programs that's offered by the City of University City. UCPD Strategic Methods Addressing Crime. The UCPD personnel receive at least a minimum of two employee evaluations per year. That's, that's standard, that has to, that has to occur. So every six months, each, every six months, an officer and employee for the University City Police Department is evaluated in a, in a very, in a very strategic method. So it's not, we get daily evaluated within our direct supervisors, but this is a total evaluation from not only the daily and direct supervisors, but also from the platoon commanders and supervisors that supervise those supervisors. We, we address crime trends on a daily, weekly and routine basis, not just seasonally. So I know we hear the term the warm weather policing, but UCPD, we utilize and we strategic plan with action plans on specifically how to combat trending issues and problems daily, but specifically weekly and routinely as well. And those are done by way of roll call settings. Roll calls are daily training sessions and a method to get the information out directly, those interpersonal contact with the officers and employees, whether those are detectives, whether those are officers, whether those are special operation units or K-9 officers. No one is just giving a key to a car and saying, let's, let's go police, University City. They're giving information daily to specify what are the needs of the community that we need to address. Roll call, like I said, the roll calls, we turn those into Q and A sessions. We also have outside trainers that come into those roll calls. Sometimes we may require the officers to come in a little time early if we know that it's going to be a longer presentation, if it's going to take an hour-long presentation to get some training accomplished. COVID brought about schedules being changed and relationships being strained, not only within our community, but within our own household. So UCPD, we have to persevere over those missions and make sure that we are still providing A1 service to everyone. As you can see right here, this is a chart that I had my crime analyst, Ms. Lane, put together. This is a depiction of Part One Crimes, the most significant crimes of, in the most, the top eight crimes that we have to report with. You know, it's robbery, homicide, burglaries, shootings, assaults, rapes, all of such. Those are, those are the most serious crimes that we have to report. And these are, and you can see there's a dip again in three years in a row, and I only had to go back three years. So literally, I can tell you for the entire city, we are down 20% in crime reduction. And that, as mentioned by Mr. Rose during his State of the City address, that was, those were stats that I was able to provide him with. We are also down in the Third Ward specifically, whether that was 394 of those crime stats reported in 2019, as well as down to 337 in 2020. And that's, these are documented incidents that we had to protect and write reports with. The U-City PD Community Camera Program is thriving. I can tell you why it's thriving. We have the most recent example is the unfortunate and callous criminals that killed Ms. Goodkin on Dalemore. That was through our, the footage that you saw came through our community camera program. A, a, a site here in University City that signed up within our community camera program was able to provide camera footage. We do not have direct links or direct ability to download anything from your, from your cameras, from your software, from your, from your systems. We act and we plead with you to register your camera system so we can know, so we can best, best serve the community when the time of need. Meaning, i.e. for that, that homicide that occurred, we knew which businesses and which residences had cameras that signed up with us. Now, if we didn't, if you did not sign up with us, then we simply had to go door-to-door knocking, and that takes a longer time for them to get that accomplished. Right here, it tells you ways of getting registered. All of this is off of the University City website, i.e. of the ucitymo.org, the city website, and on the police side, and you can see up top, I say, under the Community Services tab. Under the Community Services tab, you will see the, the benefits of registering the camera. You will also see how to register your camera. Still includes our diversion program. Our diversion programs are starting up as of June of this year. And when I say starting, we already have started, we already have a diversion program going. This would be a more, a more specific in, in, in open age group, down to ages nine to 17, that we will be diverting juveniles that, that commit status offenses over to the family court. And basically, they will be given resources for their family, resources for them to not repeat these, these, these crimes. And so, and most of these crimes will be victimless crimes, and what we mean, like shopliftings and sometimes it could, it could be a victim involved as far as vandalism, depending on the price amount or the total amount of this. We have, we have several options when we deal with this, and I will let Sean Whitley, Lieutenant Whitley, speak on that as well. But we have several options to do with this. Now, if we catch a juvenile that committed a crime, we're not talking about serious crimes as far as shootings, homicides, robberies, or what's that. Even, and even if a robbery, you have that option to say, okay, we have no other offenses documented with this child, with this juvenile, with this teen. And as you know, the age was just raised here in the state of Missouri. So now, anyone under the age of 18 is considered a juvenile. St. Louis County is one of those counties that did adhere to the the raise the age limits. So basically, there are some rural counties who do not have the funds in place to, to enforce a larger group pool of juveniles, meaning that 17-year-old group, into their juvenile system. St. Louis County does, and they are, they are adhering to them. We, like I said, we already cooperate within a diversion program with St. Louis County Family Court, and that's through the Juvenile Conference Committee. On the Juvenile Conference Committee, there are members of our own community here in University City that sit on a committee to, to address incidents that are brought forth from them, brought forth to them, that are started from the police department. So if we think that the diversion may be, be best suited for that juvenile, that is something that those, those resources are already being expended. So on top of what the school district is doing with restorative justice, University City is doing with the JDAI program, which is through St. Louis County and statewide, that's Juvenile Detentions Alternative Initiative. That's what we simply call the pilot program that started, that will be starting June 1st of this year. And the JCC is simply called the Juvenile Conference Committee. So these are several different juvenile diversion programs. We also assist with the school districts Restorative Justice Program. We're not heavily involved as far as who, when, what, why, where, but if they need our assistance for resources, we provide that to Dr. Veronica Harden and her staff. Let me move on to the Crime Tips tab. Also, under the ucitymo.org website and under the Crime Tips tab, these are the anonymous ways that you can do it online and report incidents that you think is reoccurring within your neighborhood, within our community, within our community, understanding that, that we need to address something. If you think that it needs to be addressed, but it's not ongoing as far as the time of the day, it could be occurring at three o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, when the sun goes down, whatever the case is. This is something very quick and easy. You don't need names, you don't need license plates, you give us an approximate of, of, of information, and we will handle it. This goes directly to Lieutenant Sean Whitley, as well as the Detective Bureau themselves. We get this, and this comes into us, and they, we tally all of this up. And when we tally this up, we affect a plan, a strategic plan. I meet with Lieutenant Sean Whitley, Lieutenant Brian Eisenberg, Captain Fred Lemmons. We formulate our best command structure plan. The, the lieutenants and the commanders of the investigators report directly to me, the police chief. So I know firsthand what's going on with investigations. I know firsthand what's going on with complaints that investigators are involving. Now, I can divert some, some investigations on the, if it's on the lower level scope of things, I can divert that to the Bureau of Field Operations, which would fall under Captain Frederick Lemmons, and those commanders and supervisors under that. So this is an option, as well as there are options with with hotline numbers, and I don't have that on the screen, but 314-863-7333. That's 314-863-7333. That is called our Drug/Crime Hotline. That is called our Drug/Crime Hotline. Those are also anonymous tallies, and we're not asking specific information questions. Someone will probably not answer that. There will be a voicemail message that you will leave. So if you choose not to utilize the online method, then you can send, you can contact us with the voicemail if this is something that's not ongoing at the present time. Now, if it's an emergency, that's 911. If it's a non-emergency, but it's real time that's occurring, I want you to contact the police, and that's 314-725-2211. That's, and it's throughout all of our University City websites, and you pop up, you can ask Siri or Alexa, University City Police Department, and that number will pop up. It's been the same number since I've been here, it's been the same number for over 30 plus years. So 725-2211 is something that you want to report, that you know, okay, I'm reporting, it's not an emergency, but it is an issue and it is a pet peeve of mine. Okay. The next scope is, this is just, I print this up here, just so you can see that this is a section that says questions right here. This is taken from our technology device that we have. This is a drone picture. This gives you an oversight of, an overview of what we can cover with these devices. On top of looking for runaway juveniles, abducted children, missing elderly persons that may have mistaken where they, where they were at, may have got a little discombobulated about their surroundings and understanding. We utilize those drones. We have, we have a current of six operators at this time. There are two operators that report to Lieutenant Sean Whitley and Lieutenant Brian Eisenberg and the Detective Bureau and the Bureau of Investigation. And literally, we have access to this 24 hours a day. We have several of these devices. I think we're up to, just within the police department, at least six devices that we can utilize. We also still partner with our, with our brothers and sisters in the fire department. They have a, we modeled our program after the EMS and the fire program. So it is definitely something of a big benefit and a big use to us and the fire department. I will take you off the share screen, and I will, I see a couple chats now.
Chief, what we'll do is, what I'll say is this, thank you very much for your report. I really appreciate that. What I'm gonna do is this, I'm gonna let Councilmember Clay ask his question first, then I'm gonna ask a question, and then we're going to take the panelists. I'm the guest questions after that, because I see that there are two, but I'll turn it over to Councilmember Clay right now.
Thank you, Councilman Smothers. First of all, let me apologize to Lieutenant Whitley. I was saying Whitley, because that's the other side of my family. So I apologize to that, for that sort of getting your name incorrect. Two quick questions. Can Chief Hampton or Lieutenant Whitley, can you give an update on the ShotSpotter program? We know that this time of year, unfortunately, we get a lot of reports of gunshots, and one thing we know that we've reinforced with the community is that gunshots and the sound specifically are not respecters of municipal boundaries. So we can have shots in a variety of places, not even really close to U-City, but still hear it. Understanding that, can you talk about the ShotSpotter technology and how that is helping us get to the bottom of what might be happening?
Right. And the term ShotSpotter, that is a, that is a brand name of an actual company. We actually do not have the ShotSpotter program. We actually have a gunshot detection program, but it's called V5. And it is, it is of significant use to us. We, we mapped out, we plotted out where we were getting the most reported incident calls, where we were getting the most reported verified incidents, and that, that is where we chose to utilize that equipment currently at. Now, the strategic deployment of that is, is just like us good folks all here on this panel and within the attendees are criminals read as well. So if you tell them where devices are, you have just given up your strategic advantage. So the point being is, if I, if you tell me that these two streets have this type of device, or these two areas have these type of cameras, or these two stores have this type of cameras, and then you tell me that these two streets or these two stores over here do not, well, I'm gonna go to the software target. The software target being wherever, wherever you're not at with that technology. So, so I can tell you, in general, it helps us to respond in a quicker fashion. It gives us directly, it gives us directly the location of a general area of where that sound came from. Using it as an example, we, and we have verified this, by standing in Heeman Park, you can hear a gunshot that is fired, depending on the caliber of it, a gunshot that is fired from the Hoda Mount tracks. That's while standing in Heeman Park on the Midland side. So when, when we get shots that are reported off of our jurisdictions and off of our border, we investigate that thoroughly. And we literally, we go to, if, if we're not, if it's not reported by an officer or we didn't hear it, we respond and we handle that accordingly. And we're not just saying that we got your report and we're not going to the area. If you're reporting it from a specific area, it might not have happened on your street. It might not have happened a street over. It could have been several streets over. And with us being centrally located, it bounces off of the density and that volume off of these houses very well, especially at night. And so that's something that we're working with other communities. Chief Eddie Simmons in Pagedale, Chief Buchanan in North County Co-op, Mayor McGee in Nita Park. We, we, we have dialogue and contact with all of those communities. St. Louis City as well, Wellston has North County Co-op, I guess, patrolling for the agency.
Yeah, Chief, if I could, if I can elaborate just a little bit on the ShotSpotter, the V5 system that we use. One other thing that it's helped us do is to be more efficient in our response as well to those shots. Before the implementation of the V5, we actually were kind of looking in the dark, so to speak. We had to use information that we were gathering from our citizens to guide us to approximately the location in which these, these sounds came from. But with the V5, it narrows everything down. I know we don't like tunnel vision, but it helps us kind of gauge down into a tunnel vision type fashion. And then our officers who often are directed by the supervisors to perform searches, there's a form of search that's used to gather evidence called a grid search. The grid search, with the, with the use of the V5 and the use of the grid search, officers are able to find a lot more shell casings with all those, with those tools in place to help kind of continue with the investigation. Don't get me wrong, we don't like finding them, but it happens. So when it does happen, officers are more efficient and more effective in gathering, finding information, finding evidence of those type of instances, as well as not finding them. So we don't find those, that information or find that evidence. Again, we can contact those other surrounding agencies and have Again, we can contact those other surrounding agencies and have them respond to whatever, to their respective locations or areas to also do the same thing that we're doing. But the V5 has definitely made us more efficient in our evidence gathering and gaining information on our investigations.
Thank you. Have one more question before turning it over to Councilman Smothers and then our residents for questions. The most significant crimes that happen, and I'm talking about shootings, or in some cases even homicide, they're relatively rare in University City and in the Third War, but of course, they do happen. I'm gonna ask this question not to diminish the tragedy of however these things take place. But Chief, has it been your experience that often these things happen among persons who are known to one another? Either within a household or known, and the idea that, you know, these most serious crimes are happening randomly, like folks just walking down the street and getting shot. Can you talk a little about the nature of these crimes and whether these, in the most serious circumstances, folks are known? Or is it more stranger circumstances?
Right, right. It's also the terminology, six degrees of separation. So meaning that even though that a crime has occurred, I have some type of relative connection to that victim, that victimology. Me as a suspect or perpetrator, that's where you always start. Now, a lot of, I can tell you during the pandemic, a lot of the domestic violence issues picked up. Whether that was family on family, whether that was extended family, whatever the case is, whether that was neighbor and neighbor situations. But no, it's not, it's very rare that you get random incidents like we recently had at the Delmore location. The connection is also where we follow the evidence, where we follow the leads. And in most of those leads, you will see some type of argument, disturbance, fight that occurred a week before, whatever the case situation may have been. Or you could have illegal activity that precipitates, and in either way, that's still someone known to that victim, known to that person. Whether that's drug dealing that is unbeknownst to the community because it's not a drug house, but this is a drug person involved in illegal activity. So yes, the randomness of crimes in University City is very rare because it's a very tight knit community. U-City, UCB, and all, you know, so you have that aspect of it. Now, going back to many years ago, where even issues occurred at events at parks, those were people known to each other. Well, that's not randomness, though. Those are people known to each other. But yes, that's something that we often see.
All right, sir. Thank you, sir. And very quickly, I just want to let everybody know, we're gonna get to your questions. I think this is a very important segment, and we are gonna move on with the agenda as quickly as we can. But very quickly, for the Chief and Lieutenant Whitley, this is a relevant question. And one of the things I want to mention about our police force, Chief Hampton has been very, very cooperative. Whenever there's a major issue like chokeholds, knee on the neck, and even with officers reporting bad behavior of officers, our Chief has been there to report that. Every time I've asked that, he's been there to report that at our meetings. But the one thing, Chief, that you brought up that's actually relevant, but because of COVID, we haven't been able to address is, simple question. Our police, can they, do they, how is the policy of telling the difference between their taser and their gun? And you do understand that the relevance of that question because it's happened locally in Ladue and it's happened nationally, you know, in another city. But that's actually a valid, relevant question. If you could answer that real quick and then we'll move on to our attendees' question.
Okay, I'll start off and then, and that's one of the reasons I invited Lieutenant Sean Willie onto this panel today. Not only because of the taser question, but nuisance and anything of such, he has a direct connection with on that. I can tell you, our taser training is very elaborate, it's very detailed. We have tasers marked differently with fluorescent tape. It's on the opposite, it's on the off side of the gun, and I'll let Lieutenant Willie speak on that aspect. So I'll just touch it very briefly, but I can tell you that it's trained on top of receiving your certification, you still have several hours of in-house training that you have to go and you have to accomplish every year. So purchasing the equipment and the supplies to accomplish that and providing the manpower and the scheduling to do that is minimal when it comes to saving someone's life and not having so-called the mistakes that I couldn't understand why, especially if it's on the opposite side of your gun, it's faced in the opposite direction as your gun, examples of that. I'll let Lieutenant Willie, you speak on some of the things that you train the officers and the personnel on about that.
Right, as the Chief stated earlier, that I just completed my third instructional recertification as a taser instructor. So I've been a taser instructor over the last, probably like fourteen, fifteen years. First generation, which was the X-26. Since then, we know we've had a number of issues with the taser weapon confusion is the technical term to call it. And we have, in conversation with the Chief, we have updated our policy and improved it to specifically state that no officer in our department will be allowed to carry their taser on the same side as their duty weapon. Now, referencing a little bit the officer in Ladue, her taser was carried opposite her duty weapon. However, during the course of the event and/or because lack of training and the heat of the moment, the poor choice of drawing her weapon versus her taser, as she thought, was the problem. That being said, we have since also implemented additional training. In addition to the training that our officers get on the re-instruction side, every year that they have to go through with myself, Lieutenant Myheart, as well as Sergeant Lot, we've implemented a strict in-service training that we go through with the officers that is strictly about weapon confusion. It's probably ten, eleven page PowerPoint that takes probably, we're taking up to about a half hour to deal with it, to go through it, to make sure our officers clearly understand and know during the course of the heat of the moment, so they don't have the issue and draw the wrong weapon. So I have one of our tasers with me to show how they're currently marked. This is also one of the updates we've made with the taser, with the fluorescent enhanced. Enhanced, I don't know if everybody can see that or not. This is the current taser as it exists. So as the taser, as the taser sits in the officer's holster on his weak hand side. So if the officer is right-handed, his taser has to be left, if everybody can follow me on that. So when he draws, he has to draw with his right, but it's the motion of the cross draw method, which allows, which obviously is alert mentally to allow that, to let him know that, hey, I'm drawing taser, not my weapon, to my strong hand, and then you draw down on the target. Now, as I already pointed out, with enhanced markings on it, the taser, as it sits in the holster, you can see these markings. So not only does the officer can see the officer, see the enhanced markings, so can any support officers and/or citizens that are present can see the markings of the taser as he draws that weapon from the holster.
And adding real quick, Lieutenant, that then comes the duty to intervene. Another one of our policies that is well above the standards of the, so that support officer, if they see a mistake occur, their duty to intervene. But this particular training encompasses that mental and that stressful training method, because it's not just a PowerPoint, but it is hands-on training. And that is one of the main reasons why we're adamant on the training facility, area, space that will be needed for the police department to make sure that we can continue that. We do get that virtually sometimes by going to other locations, but we keeping that in-house and training, that would be, that would definitely be a plus.
And as it is with any training, as everybody knows, the practical application of any weapon or any tool that you have makes you more efficient with it. So as part of that training, the practical application is pretty still, and it is designed to put the user, taser user, in the mindset of a stressful situation. So there is no issue as to what weapon he or she is drawing at the time that they're engaging someone.
That's correct. Okay, thank you, thank you both. Councilmember Clay, go ahead, please.
Yeah, we do need to move along, but clearly we want to get to our residents' questions. So Assistant Manager Mankaluso, if you could read those questions. And I'll ask our Chief and Lieutenant, answer as briefly as you can, but clearly as thoroughly as you can.
Yeah, I'll cover these in.
Our first question, it relates to the crime slash drug hotline. The question is, people say their information is given to the perpetrator, is this true?
That's inaccurate. That is not, that is not a method of the University City Police Department. If you're anonymous, first off, you don't have to give your name on the crime tip, but that's the very first thing. Secondly, that is information that would not be shared with any perpetrators or suspects within your neighborhood or your area.
Our second question is, are police reports slash statistics going to the county, state, and/or national database? What do we participate in or sharing our data? Why or why not?
We share all of our information. The, all of our information has to be sent in through MIBRs, which is the state-run, the Missouri State-run facilities that we have to be in compliance with. Then we also have to share that with the federal compliance regulators, with these NIBRs. So basically, yes, everything is sent out to Missouri State. We have to get approval to say that, and all of this is to make sure that we stay on board and in compliance to keep receiving federal funds, state funds. So yes, it is shared. And it's on our website, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Sorry. And follow up to that, this person asks, are our statistics reporting on a calendar year or a fiscal year basis?
They're on a calendar year. We don't, we do not report on fiscal year. It's every location or every law enforcement agency has to report on a calendar year specifically for the NIBRs and the MIBRs compliance rules.
The next question is, how can people commit crime over and over for generations? However, they roam the street free, destroy the neighborhood, why is this?
Well, one thing I would say on that, and I saw that question earlier, we do not dictate a person's punishment. We enforce the laws. So if there is punishment that is lightweight, that is something that needs to be discussed within our judicial system in general. So the police department can't dictate how long we hold a person. They have to be sentenced by a judge and they have to, that has to be throughout a fair and impartial trial, if that is the method. But whether that's city, county, or state, city, county, state, or federal, whichever the case is. I can tell you, there have been several examples where Lieutenant Whitley and fellow of his colleagues, we have participated with federal prosecution, whether that's ATF, DEA, and the United States Prosecutor's Office. One of the former judges here, Paul DeGrosen, Mr. DeGrosen. He has been, he personally took on a case that we had of the young man that was killed in the Third Ward. What was that location?
Five hundred block of Corbett.
Sixty-five hundred block of Corbett. That last homicide over there, all of those perpetrators have been federally charged. So that, so now that, how they run the street or how people run the street, that's an inaccurate assessment to the police department. We can only, we can't be overbearing on what we provide and what we do when we enforce the laws. We can only enforce the laws for the sworn duties that we are given.
Our next question is a, it's a question and a comment. So why or how can we get our police officers to participate in a city-sponsored or supportive youth recreation program? For example, the PAL-type programs with officer participation, especially our young officers.
Assistant Manager Mankaluso, we might not have to read the whole thing, because I think Chief can't see the question. But that is the question.
Okay, okay. And I understand, I have several, I have several employees that participate in programs. Lieutenant Sean Willie has mentioned in this question is one of those, is one of those personnel. I can tell you that we have a very stringent schedule. We do cooperate and collaborate with the PAL program. There is not a PAL program here in University Cities per se. We did take up with PAL in St. Louis County, and we provided summer school attendance that University City was participating in. And that summer school program that was sponsored by PAL and co-sponsored with University City was at Brittany Woods. That was before the pandemic. If you do recall that, we also took those same kids that participated in that program. It was in programs, it was in communities like University City, Normandy, Hazelwood East, the specific locations that PAL program is utilized and needed. Now, what I can tell you is that if there are more programs that pop up within University City, we're more than willing to participate. It comes down to an officer of our community making sure we have the time to participate, and we will. And Lieutenant Willie is one of those gentlemen. I've been a coach several times before. My son came up in T-ball here with the University City Sports Association. So I understand all of the utilizations and the participations of me.
Our next question is regarding streets. Do you wanna?
Yeah, let's do that at the end.
Okay. The next question is, what is our citizen access slash viewing policy of body camera footage? Is it public? Is it comparable with surrounding cities? Is it more or less stringent?
Ours is more stringent. I can tell you that right now. And what I mean by that is, we have a policy that is, that is, giving an example, we have a policy that's almost eleven to fifteen pages long. I've seen some law enforcement agencies with a body camera policy that only has two to three pages. We're very restrictive on what we're allowed to do, what we can't do. And that policy is posted on the website as well. But you can view and you can see that, there's a link on there, if you put in body worn cameras policy and you can access that, you can see what it is. We have nothing to hide with that. With the internal International Association of Chiefs of Police, Kalia, Missouri Police Chiefs, Perth, Noble. All of a sudden, I'm a board member on Noble, and I can tell you, heavily involved within the policy process here at University City.
That looks to be our last police-related question.
I think we may have one more regarding the timeline taken, the timeline taken to process for initial call to action. Please provide the timeline taken to process for initial call to action for nuisance households.
Okay, and that's another reason I brought Lieutenant Sean Willie here, is because he, the nuisance, the complaints, the drug hotline complaints, the anonymous complaints, the complaints in general that is fed to the investigative unit goes and is tallied by this gentleman right here. So Lieutenant Willie, cover that real briefly for them as far as the timeline for the nuisance property.
Yeah, as far as the nuisance house is concerned, we understand that obviously the ordinance violation exists. What we generally do is that upon receiving complaints of a house being a nuisance household, meaning that there's criminal activity being conducted at a house, drug activity, prostitution, any number of criminal activities coming from the house, and we can determine it. What we do is we assess that information and we include that information in our current nuisance letter that we have. So once we've established that there's a reasonable amount of items to put on the list, probably about, you start about three, four, or five of those type of instances, that's enough for us to kind of get it going and get everything moving in the right direction. After developing that, we get it approved. Within a couple of days, we present that same information to the homeowner. But during that, the homeowner, if it's a rented property, we track down the homeowner, the person who owns the property, and/or the owner of the property by the resident, we track that individual down. Once we've tracked them down, we present them with the information via hand, so we have a face-to-face with them. Most of the time, we call them to the station to have them come in for a face-to-face. Hey, we kind of go over the bullet points with them and say, hey, these are the issues that we have at your house. These are the call for service at your house. These are the call for service at your house. So we go over those. Of course, you know, you did engage in some dialogue with those individuals. Oh, that's not happening. Or, you know, this, that, and the other. As it relates, if it's the home, if it's, uh, the renter, uh, then on the side of it's the owner, uh, and it's a property, it's a rental property, they may indicated, oh, I didn't know. I was not aware of what was going on and things that nature. So, well, now that you've made, now that you have been made aware based on the fact we're presenting you with this particular, uh, information, now we need the problem to cease and desist. So any issues that have been arising, that are arising, need to be abated as effective and efficiently as possible by the responsible parties. Now, obviously, if it doesn't, if you refuse to abate those issues or get rid of them, uh, I mean, get rid of them or make some changes in your behavior, then you, we obviously proceed with the other measures that we take, take, that take place. Um, which that house can kind of, uh, we, we give their, I don't say we give them a certain window, but there's a reasonable amount of time that we give them for the house to get it, be made into compliance so that they abate all the issues. Uh, since, uh,
Let, let, let me cut, let me cut you off, Lieutenant. What, what the main issue is abating the issue that is affecting the community. And whatever means that is within our law that we can do, we can't go kick in somebody's house. Most of the times when you're seeing us come to a, a property, we're asking for consent to search that out. Whether it's overcrowding, whether it's dealing with, uh, uh, code violations within the house or without, around the house. Now, at, at some points, you may get, uh, uh, residents that say, no, you, you're not coming in my property. Get off my property. You may get that. We have to take other avenues that we have to proceed on that. And there is not one line of a flow chart. I did see that question pop up. There is not one line of a flow chart because you have to deal with individuals on an individual basis. Uh, some, some, some landlords are not within, in the state of Missouri. And so thus, you have to take that into consideration that now we're reaching out to somebody that's two to three states away, that does not have a management company affecting this property. So now you're dealing with the tenants and you're going, you're having to make the cases of the tenants. Sometimes you may have an elderly, uh, 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 matriarch or patriarch within the household that does not know what the younger generation is doing within their own household. That's another issue that we have to, we have to come across and that we try to, uh, get abated. So those are just a few things, but if you, if anyone is ever confused about how to handle a, a nuisance property within your community, Lieutenant Sean Woodley, Lieutenant Brian Eisenberg, Chief Larry Hampton, or even, uh, Captain Fred Lemmons, any of my supervisors that are command levels will be able to, uh, explain you through that process.
Look, let me, uh, let me try to summarize the last couple. We will follow up with more, um, comprehensive answers. It looks like, um, some of the comments expressed a desire potentially for police to connect with, uh, Redbird rookie. So we can certainly follow up on that. Uh, uh, I think this hopefully can be answered very quickly. Does each ward get the same patrol time? Is it true the third ward gets less time? You get very quickly answer that. That's an important question.
I, I saw, I saw that question and that, and that is a horrible myth. I don't know who, who starts that myth, who, who states that myth because the bottom line is, is we go where the, like I said, we go where the evidence takes us. We go where the crime or the, or the statistics takes us as well. So no one is receiving less patrol time there. We break, the, 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 the city of University City has broken down for city officials to three wards. We break it down into seven districts. Within the third ward, there are at least four districts addressing crime on a daily basis. So you're talking about seven districts and four of those are effective within the third ward. So no, that is, that is incorrect. And I, 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 uh, it, that, when I see that, I, I, I quickly have to shake my head. That's, I don't know who's saying that, how they can say that when they're seeing the patrol cars specifically in the third wall, uh, uh, on the routine basis that they do see.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief, and, and, and Lieutenant Wood. I want to thank Chief Hampton and Woodley and Lieutenant Woodley for their time. I appreciate the questions and, and giving the information that you did. That was absolutely, uh, important for us to hear. Um, what I want to do also, I want to move on. And again, thank you all. You all have a great rest of the evening. But we wanted to move on with the agenda. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is that for every attendee that's on this call or, or on the meeting right now, as, uh, Councilmember Clay mentioned in the beginning, if you have a question that we didn't get to, uh, in reference to Police Chief Hampton and Lieutenant Sean Woodley, uh, we will address those questions with them and answer them in our newsletter. So we want to get to those questions and we will at some given point in time. But I wanted to go ahead and move on, uh, with the next item on our agenda. And that is the opening of Centennial Commons and the pool update. And I wanted to know if, if Councilmember Clay had anything, because I can actually, because of the changes and recent changes that have happened, I want to go ahead and let, um, our City Manager Rose address that issue, if that's okay with Councilmember Clay.
Sure.
Sure. There, there are a couple of things on that. Um, we are scheduled to open up, uh, Centennial Commons in the pool on May the twenty-eighth, uh, with, uh, and May the twenty-ninth. Uh, we are, have identified what the hours of operation are. Uh, those are just how we are intending to start, uh, as we gain, um, more experience and as we gain additional staffing. The intention is to, uh, to modify those hours of, uh, of operations. I can tell you that, uh, as council members are aware, uh, they have authorized me to, uh, for the Memorial Day weekend, which I think is very good news, uh, to allow, uh, University City residents into, uh, our pool for free. Uh, and so I recognize that, uh, you know, people have been locked down for quite a while. And, and I think this is just the American Council's way of providing some, uh, a bit of relief, uh, to the, uh, to the residents here.
And can you speak to the, uh, to the, uh, specific hours? So, so I have the, the date Centennial Commons is opening is Friday, May twenty-eighth.
That's correct.
And the, and the hours of Centennial Commons are, I mean, I have the document. I can just read it here. Uh, is this correct? Monday through Thursday, seven AM to seven PM. Friday, seven AM to four thirty PM, and Saturday, eight AM to twelve noon, and on Sunday, facilities close.
That's correct. We structured the hours for both the, uh, for both Centennial Commons and the pool based upon the current staffing that we have. And, and as you know, there is a, really a national problem with, uh, trying to, uh, to hire people for, for these types of positions as well as, uh, in the restaurant and other, other, uh, industries that would have similar pay. So based upon that, we identified, uh, we have this staffing. What are the hours where we think we can have the broadest impact? And that's how the schedule was, uh, was developed. Uh, but again, the intention is to, as we gain staff, and if we, uh, find that, um, adjustments needs to be made, uh, we're certainly are intending to make those adjustments with the, with the operating hours. I would just ask everyone for, uh, for patience, uh, as we go through this process. Um, I can tell you, uh, I don't, I think that there are a few people that were trained in how to deal with a, with a pandemic. So I believe all of us are trying to muddle through this situation and, uh, provide really the high-quality services to the residents, uh, that we can. But we want to make sure that as we open up our facilities, uh, that we also, uh, are assured that the residents will be extremely safe, uh, while they are using the facilities.
And I did see a question come through about wearing a mask in Centennial Commons.
We're, we are encouraging, uh, people to, uh, to wear a mask. Um, oh, that is something that, that we are still, uh, deliberating, I would say, among staff. Certainly our, our staff will, uh, will be required to have on masks. Uh, but before we actually do the final, uh, opening, we'll put out a statement regarding whether we are encouraging or whether we are requiring it. For the outside, for the pool, uh, you know, again, that's going to be a personal choice uh, that people, uh, will make about the wearing of masks. It's only for Centennial Commons, uh, where, uh, we have not yet decided whether masks will be required. We will probably make that optional as well, but I, I can't say that until I finish my discussions with, uh, with staff.
Hey. All right, sir. Uh, thank you very much. Um, did we have any other questions? It doesn't look like we did. Um,
Can I make one other statement? This gets us back to policing. Um, I, I think when, uh, Chief Hampton and Lieutenant Woodley, uh, were describing the, uh, the shot spotter, basically shot detection, gunshot detection program that we have, they would, uh, reference the technology. But what's really important is, you know, when people are shooting off their weapons, typically they're not doing that on an island. Uh, and so they normally have neighbors. So we really depend heavily on residents in the areas to assist our police in identifying. Uh, the gunshot detection is good. Uh, just that old-fashioned people working with our, uh, police officers is better. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. And, and, and very quickly, uh, City Manager Rose, we did have a question about what's the process for? And, and I do apologize, Ms., uh, with our city city manager, assistant city manager, and, and that she's supposed to be monitoring this and actually doing that. But can you, if you don't mind, would you go ahead and ask that question about the street payment, please?
Oh, sure. Uh, we have a rating system that, uh, determines how quickly we're going to be able to do major improvements to streets. Uh, that rating typically goes from one to five. The rating, uh, structure, it happens every, uh, every couple of years. So if someone wants to know when their street is scheduled to be paved, if it was, if it's within a five-year period, they can contact our Public Works Department and speak with, uh, I'll say the, uh, Public Works Director, which is seen on Apple's phone. He can be reached at five zero five eight five six zero. Uh, and he or his designate can share with the resident, uh, when the, uh, when the improvement is scheduled for their street.
Okay. And I think we do have another question in the chat about, um, reservations for the community center of pavilions.
Yeah. At, at this point, our focus is really on trying to, uh, open up Centennial Commons and the pool. We have limited staff. Uh, but if, uh, if an individual is interested in leasing it, I, I would encourage them to contact our Parks and Recreation, uh, Department. And I don't want to give you the gentleman, but let me give you the number to our Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, the best number to call is five zero five eight six two five. And they can, uh, they will be, uh, able to share with you the time period when they think those rentals, uh, might start. But most of that is really tied to our ability to bring on additional staff.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um, but then, uh, with, with that being said, what I wanted to do is go ahead and move forward with the, with the agenda. And it looks like on our agenda as of right now, it's a brief Olive and one seventy update. And, uh, if anyone be, you know, uh, between Councilmember Clay and myself, if you have questions specifically about that, please, uh, chat, type that in on the chat and we'll address that as best as we can. Uh, I just simply wanted to say, I, I want to turn it over to Councilmember Clay right now, uh, and let him speak, uh, and, and address that. And then if there's something else I can add, we'll go forward. Thank you.
And, uh, a number of things, I, to, to everyone, I'm sorry, I didn't do this to everybody. Uh, can someone put our emails in the chat and send it out to everybody so if people do have, um, questions they want to follow up with, our emails are, are in the chat. Uh, so let, let me say, uh, a couple of things. Um, since we last met, um, in a third ward meeting context, a number of things have happened. Uh, the properties on the, the north side of Olive, um, almost, but not quite to Woodson, um, have been secured. They've been, uh, purchased by the, the developer. Um, and so they are being prepared, uh, for their, their demolition, um, and ultimately, um, the construction of the, uh, of the Costco. Um, so that has happened, um, as articulated in the, in the redevelopment agreement. Um, three million dollars from the sale of the, the site of Costco has been transferred to the city. Um, and Councilman Smolison and I, along with, uh, the rest of council are working through a process now, uh, to ensure third ward, uh, predominant representation on, um, any, uh, decision-making body that would, that would work with, uh, these funds. Uh, so that's, that's what we are, are, are working with now. Um, I'll turn it over to Councilman Smolison if there's anything that, uh, he, he wishes to add.
Well, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Clay. Uh, what I wanted to actually say and address about the one seventy development. If there, and there, one of the things that people are questioning is why this is taking so long? And, and I, and I just simply wanted to say the development in University City at Olive and one seventy involves many different businesses that exist in that area. And, and that's why it's kind of, uh, it's been taking as long as it is because court and we've had to actually, and then, and with the negotiations that's happening with those businesses, uh, between the businesses and the development, and the developer, uh, has been, has actually taken a, a bit of time. But also remember, we've had COVID. We also had an issue that involved the school district. So there were many different aspects that happened with this development. Uh, the Olive Vet Development. The Olive Vet Development had ten houses, a gas station that was vacant, a daycare, and Office Max. Other than that, the rest of it was forest. It was just woods. So they didn't have much to acquire in reference to their project. So that's why you saw their action taken, uh, and, and almost, well, not immediately, but it took a while before that happened. Again, ours had a lot of different components to it that had to be addressed. But believe me, I would think if the city manager concurs, we're going to probably see something happening in, at Olive and one seventy, probably in the next, I would say sixty days, if, if not sooner, but I would say probably about. Um, we are going to try to keep as close to the promises that we've made in that agreement to the residents of University. Make sure that we are a part of this development. One of the things that I've done, and the city manager had this in his email, and that is sort of kind of a letter from a resident that lives close to the site, who has been talking to the developer, and she wants to be part of this. Well, we're going to try to keep our promises best we can. The city manager does. And we're going to, and, and he's the point man for this development for University City. And we're going to try to make sure that we keep our promise and, and get University City residents that want Floyd or part of this develop, uh, we're going to keep that as well as we can, as best we can, for, in, in that regard. So, yes, sir, City.
And I'll, I'll say quickly, within the redevelopment agreement, we do have a provision for Costco's, um, related to Costco about, uh, we're hiring first, looking within the third ward to, to hire folks to, um, to work in Costco. So that's in, that's in the, in the redevelopment agreement as well. There was another question in, and I am mindful of the time. So maybe we commit to going no more than five minutes, five more minutes to eight fifteen. Um, it's been a long day for our, our, our city staff. We want to be respectful of that and also your time as well. Um, we did have a question about, um, the, the maximum exposure for business relocations. Um, the, the five hundred thousand has been allocated for that purpose. Um, uh, no more above that amount. Coming from EDRST, will you support or allow this? Uh, hello?
I'm still here, here. Yes. Yes. I don't know. Um, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, the, uh, I was going to look to City Manager Rose to add some commentary to that, uh, question.
Is he there? It doesn't look like he is any longer. And Assistant City Manager Macalusa, you're, you're on mute.
All right, Macalusa. Let me, I can go get him. He's right next door because I'm not having connection issues. Let me, let me see about him.
So while we're waiting for City Manager Rose, and I did want to say, I, I believe that that is in reference to relocation. Yes, sir. City Manager Rose, you see the question that we have right now? What's the maximum exposure to, in reference to relocations, get funding if the amount goes over $500,000? If you could explain that, I believe that that's, that's our maximum. If that's correct, you can answer that question, please.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I was, I was kicked out for some reason. So I'm back. Could you please tell me what the question is?
And, and it's in the chat, yes. And the question is, what is our maximum exposure for business relocations? Where we, where we get, will we get funding if the amount goes over $500,000?
Yeah, happy to respond to that. The, the way that the city is approaching relocation assistance is really in two ways. Work first is for businesses. So we, did I get freeze up? For businesses and what we're doing is treating each business like an economic development opportunity. We've identified because this economic development related, economic, the use of EDRST, which is just Economic Development Retail Sales Tax Fund, to assist us in retaining those businesses within University City that the mayor and council believe are worth, are worth retaining. So we identified $500,000. There was no